Okay, I'm gonna call the March 1st, 2022. Workshop to order at eight, at 7:30 PM. Can we all stand for the pledge?
Would you like me to screen share the image again?
Please. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thanks everyone for joining us tonight. We have, we have a nice agenda, I think it will be a fun evening for us. We have some special guests. So, real quickly, can we just check and see if we have anyone waiting for public comment?
Okay, it's a bit of housekeeping for those who may not be familiar, please use the raise hand option on Zoom if you'd like to make a public comment. Okay, at this time, there are no raised hands for public comment.
Okay, so then, without further ado, our first item is going to be a presentation from two and two, Ronnie, if you would do the honors of introducing our guests this evening.
So, the communications committee has met with two plus two for branding. Before I introduce them, I want to make sure that I thank the members of the committee with staff being Robin Friedman, Amy Berger, Andrew Farber, Tao Nguyen, and fellow board member, Shoray Anand. And so, it's been quite a journey. It's been a wonderful journey and so I'm really pleased to turn the meeting over to Alex DiGinosi and Alex Reed, who are two plus two.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Let me share my screen. And we can kick off the presentation, hopefully you can all see this, get it to full mode. There we go.
Perfect.
Great. So, good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. As Ronnie mentioned, it's been a, it's been a fun couple of months learning more about the Chapua Library. And as a quick way of introduction, I'm Alex DiGinosi, Creative Director of Q&amp;Q and a longtime Chappaqua resident, going, you know, even being in Grafflin Bell and graduating from Greeley way back when. And my partner on the strategy side is Alex Reed.
Hi, everybody. A Westchester resident, not, not Chappaqua, but still very excited to, to be here and contribute.
Yeah, so extremely excited. It's been a great process. And we're just gonna kick it off with the strategy and then get into our design recommendations. So, without further ado, let's go to the next page.
Great. And, you know, the, what we're sharing with you all is really the, a reflection of a great deal of work together. Reviewing the current communications of the library to understand, you know, the current state, identify areas of opportunity, assessing the approaches of other libraries, some of which were close by, you know, in our neck of the woods, you know, Austining, Rye Free Reading Room, Westport Library, Scarsdale Public Library. Not so much as competitors, but really just to determine when to speak a common language and when to look for opportunities to, to stand out a bit. And we also had a number of conversations with, with staff members and stakeholders at the library, just to make sure that we were really, you know, cognizant of and had a very strong handle on specific aspects of the Chappaqua Library that we wanted to come through in, in the work. So, as Alex mentioned, we're going to start with the brand platform, which really establishes the foundation for everything else you're gonna see afterwards, the logo, the overall look and feel, etc. And when we think about the brand platform, there are really three key components that we zeroed in on. The brand story, which is really an articulation of what you stand for, how you're different, why all of the different audiences that are important to you should engage with the library. The messaging pillars, the, you know, a few statements that really capture your unique point of view, right? These are things that all of the communications are gonna be built, you know, built upon going forward. And the personality, this is where, you know, tone of voice really comes in and you see this come through in the design as well. Some of the characteristics that, you know, really start to give the brand a bit more, you know, well, personality, right? Capturing the spirit and really informing tone and manner. So, these are the three things we're gonna cover and then, you know, I think you'll see a nice transition to, you know, how these start to come to life visually as well. So Alex, if you go to the next, perfect. So, I'm gonna walk through each one of these one by one. So, again, the, the brand story that we really wanted to articulate really captures, we think, you know, some of the aspects that are unique and important to, to the Chappaqua Library specifically. The Chappaqua Library serves as a vibrant focal point of the community. Our warm and welcoming environment is a place for sharing experiences, perspectives, and passions. We bring people of all ages, backgrounds, and cultures together to ignite intellectual curiosity, build a broader understanding, and cultivate connections. The dynamic resources, programs, and services offered by our knowledgeable staff keep pace with our evolving world, adapting to the needs of our community as they come together to enrich each other's lives. So, really purposeful here about, again, trying to capture both the role that we play today, but the role that we will continue to play in the future as a library is constantly evolving and being shaped by the needs of the community. The pillars, as I mentioned before, these are really, you know, sort of foundational elements that a lot of the communications are gonna be built upon, right? And, and these are things that are true, you know, today, tomorrow, five years from now, right? They're fundamental, they are part of your DNA. Things that you hold dear and really, you know, try to embody. So, three things that we, we focused on, one, the idea of promoting exploration and learning. Actively engaging with the community, designing rewarding programs, encouraging intellectual curiosity, nurturing a lifelong love of learning. Adapting to diverse needs, that's another, I think, really important pillar that we needed to focus on. Being very committed to maintaining inclusive, safe, welcoming is a very big part of the story, I think, for Chappaqua Library. A welcoming space that provides equal access to programs that connect everybody. And finally, enriching the lives of the community, being that heart, right? That heart of the community that is maintaining a sense of place that makes Chappaqua unique. It's a really nice concept that you'll, you'll start to see come to life visually as well. But that notion that we are truly this, you know, this, you know, this, this hub, where, you know, people are really connecting with one another, we're engaging local organizations, and we're shaping the, the community itself. So, those are messaging pillars for, for the library. And then, the, finally, the personality. So, again, this is, these are those human characteristics that really capture not only, you know, visually, you know, what you, what you're going to see in the brand and certainly the tone, you know, language as well, but also the experience, right? When you are at the library, when you are there, these are the kind of things that, you know, you, you know, these are the kind of people that, that you, you interact with. People who are positive, right? Optimistic, assured, inviting, again, just going back to being very welcoming, approachable, conversational, I think is very important, right? Vibrant, which we really loved as an attribute because, you know, a lot of people might think that libraries are, you know, this is a quiet place and sort of a, you know, a place that doesn't have a lot of dynamic energy. That's not what we found at the Chappaqua Library, right? So, we wanted to make sure that we brought that forward. And, you know, again, you know, really capture that in the work that you're, you're gonna be seeing Alex present shortly. And then finally, committed. You know, this notion that we are, you know, we are this trusted presence in the community and we are enduring, right? We've, we've, you know, we've been around very long, very, very long time and we are going to continue to be, right? Because we are committed to adapting to the needs of the community around us.
Excellent.
So, I can, we can pause there for a moment just to make, you know, just make sure anyone has a chance to, are there any questions? But otherwise, obviously move straight into some of Alex DiGinosi's work.
That's, that's really great. I think it definitely speaks to all the research we gave you from the strategic planning and, and what you definitely picked up. That's great. Thank you.
Great. So, if there's no other comments or questions, we can move on to the logo and visual system work in progress. And what we'll see here is how all that strategy in this first section came to life and things that really, you know, struck a chord with, with me, the designer, are these terms and, and, and quotes from, from the strategy that the library is this collection of information and ideas and needs and this idea of shared experience of different things coming together and people coming together to enrich lives. So, that idea of a, of a quilt comes to mind, you know, quilt is different colors and different shapes and different patterns coming together to create a greater whole. And so, that's what we were trying to hope for in our logo is to create a similar, you know, expression as, as a quilt. Also, another way of thinking about it is, is the communities that we live in here in Chappaqua. But if you, you know, take an overview shot of, of our, of our homes, you know, it's made up of different, different shapes, different houses, where the books we love, taking those shapes of a, of a spine of a book or a video or a DVD or, or any type of horizontal thing, or the, the faces of the people that we serve and our patrons and our librarians. So, circles, rectangles, squares, all coming together. We, we, we came to this solution, the Chappaqua Library. Again, it's that idea of diversity, different things, different colors, different shapes, coming together to create a greater whole. And so, we're super excited about this new logotype for the Chappaqua Library, very modern, very energetic and vibrant, but welcoming. And there's also a little bit of discovery in there too. You see the different shapes and the different colors and it sort of resolves and you, and you see the, the letters of, of the word library. Again, not final, we can tweak the colors a little bit, but it's, it's pretty, pretty close. And then, seeing the logo for the first time, it always helps to see it in context. So, just to see it on a, a few applications such as a tote bag. Nothing's been ordered, but, you know, this is something that we, we could think about creating. Be great for the patrons, possible sign. Vinyl, we've got a beautiful glass facade. This could be very exciting. And a clear signal to our patrons that something is, is new and afoot inside those walls. We also created a monogram for small applications like a Favacon or a, or an app button, a C and an L, made up the, of the same geometric shapes. As well as, you know, Alex mentioned, we've been a lot, around for a long time. It's, it's a hundred year anniversary, so that's super exciting. So, we've created a a special logotype that, that expresses our, our centennial. And then, another playful thing we could do with this is, you know, our, our children's section is hugely important. And the library is very youthful and energetic, but we can even dial it up some more by giving a little bit more motion and energy and, and, you know, childlike fun to the logo without losing the, the equity of that, of, of our primary logo. So, really excited about some of those possibilities. A library card, hugely important application. But we explored, you know, taking the shapes of those letter forms and abstracting them and overlapping them, again, talking about our vibrancy, our approachability, some really, you know, nice, nice graphic solutions can come through in our visual system for different applications with, with these shapes. Even down to the, you know, end of our shells signage, just an example of how, how things could come to life and how our brand can be infused in, in different areas of our library. Website too, of course, incredibly important touchpoint, how the font, how the colors, how imagery can, you know, unify different applications, but all speak to our, our new library brand. And other things, again, taking shapes of those letter form parts, those geometric shapes, we could knock out our logo on them. And these are all just, you know, examples, nothing's been set in stone. As well as using the, the shapes as a window into, into an image, or dropping out our logo from another image. Lots of possibilities. And that's what you really want in a, in a logo these days is flexibility, excitement, energy, uniqueness. Keeps it fresh and it keeps the, the patrons excited as well. And so, when you see it all together, we're, we're, you know, super thrilled about the logotype, about the colors, about the applications, about the possibilities of, of where we can take this. So, that is our presentation for you this evening.
Thank you so much, Alex and Alex. And I think Liz, do you wanna say anything about how we're gonna proceed with this?
Yeah, so I, I, I think, you know, having had a career where I was at a lot of presentations of, of new creative, I would like everyone to just sit with this. And then, rather than give our, our feedback immediately, because I think these things are, you know, it takes a little bit of time to, 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 to absorb the creative, it's new and it's exciting and hopefully everyone likes it, but rather than get into that this evening, what I'd like everyone to do is if, if the board, if we can funnel our comments and questions to Ronnie as a chairperson for the committee, then her and Tao will convene the committee, have a meeting, and then Tao can facilitate that feedback back to Alex and Alex and they can make some final tweaks. And the goal is really to get a, get a final logo in front of the board for our blessing so that we can then start rolling this out in our communications and, and then quickly turn to the website and some of the larger pieces that will embody this branding. And I think, so hopefully, I'm not, Ronnie, do you guys, you guys don't have a date yet for one-year meeting, do you?
No, we don't.
Okay, so I would say within the next two weeks before our next board meeting, certainly we should get you our feedback. And generally, I would say, well, it's fresh in your minds, if you can do it in the next day or so. Well, I'll, I will commit to getting you my feedback and then you guys can meet as you can and, and move this forward. But I really want to thank everyone because I know, you know, starting from the strategic planning committee where Andrew and Tao and the community were really actively working with staff to figure out what did the community want in their future library? And, and what did they love about it today? And then, taking all that work and then carrying it over into the communications and making sure that Alex and Alex understood that. And I know that, you know, you guys have all been working really hard. And it, to me, it really shows and I, I feel like it's a great reflection of, 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 of the library and what, what we can be and what we are. So, I just want to thank you guys for your time and effort. And I know we didn't go into it tonight, but we did have a presentation when we selected you guys to do this work, where we went into in, in depth on your expertise and all of the other logos in your portfolio. And, you know, it's, it's really an honor to have you working on behalf of the library. And I feel really lucky that you're a town resident and that you, that you guys have to collectively put your, put your efforts towards this. And I think it's gonna be great. So, thank you for, for giving us the opportunity to see this tonight. And I'm sure we're gonna have feedback and we'll try to be as efficient with that as possible. Thank you.
Can I just add one thing? I think it would be a good plan to have the, this deck sent to all the board members to look at because they're just, you know, it's a visual thing. And so,
Tao, is Tao, is there anything you, is there anything you'd like to add? And would you be able to do that?
Um, of course, yeah, I will share the, um, the deck with the staff tomorrow and the board as well.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much for all your work on this.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you, Liz and Alex.
Righty. Yeah, I'd like to thank you, Alex and Alex, on behalf of the library and the staff and thank the, the committee for all the hard work getting to this point.
And the committee really enjoyed working with you and will continue to enjoy working with you in this process. And I want to piggyback on what Liz said about how we're so happy that, to be working with both of you and particularly Alex, who has grown up in Chappaqua. And we know you were very generous in how you're, the work that you're doing for us too. So, we do appreciate that. I want you to know that. So.
Wonderful, wonderful to hear. And thank you so much. We're, we're honored to be partnering with you all and we couldn't be happier with direction of, of where we're going. So, thank you all very much.
Awesome. Have a great evening. Thanks for joining us.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, I'm, I'm glad that we were able to do that and that we, we, I think we have a pretty efficient agenda. Andrew, you had the personnel item for us, correct?
Yes, I'd, I'd like to have the library board appoint Gabrielle Esposito to the vacant part-time librarian one position effective February 18th at the hourly rate of $32.21.
Can I have a motion from the floor?
I'll move to appoint whatever Andrew said.
Gabriel Esposito to, to the position of part-time librarian one at the rate of
$32 and some cents.
Twenty, twenty-one cents.
And it's part-time, you have to say.
I did. So, we have, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I, I, I'll start a little discussion. I just want to say this position has been open for a little while here and Andrew did a great job. I, I know you're very excited about this hire. And we're happy that we will have our, almost a hundred percent of the roles filled. And we appreciate your efforts. Does anyone else want to add anything before we call for a vote? Okay, so all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Those are some big shoes to fill and they're filled. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the budget. And I, I really want to thank Andrew for being so process-oriented and making sure that we had ample time to go through the budget several, several times before we actually vote on it at our April meeting. So, just as a point of process, tonight, we are reviewing two versions and talking about what we want Andrew to bring back for us to sort of to agree upon as the budget that we plan to pass in at our April meeting so that we get, can give the the community the month to review it before we vote, before we vote to send it to them for the election or the as part of the May vote. So, um, so I think we've, it, in our past meetings, we've, we've really honed in on the operational budget and we've done a really nice job, I think, of giving Andrew feedback. And Andrew has done a good job of doing the incremental research that we needed to shore up all of the numbers in the operating budget. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, we, we feel, we all feel pretty good about that operating budget at this point. Yep. Okay, so that's great. So, then the two areas that we really need to discuss this evening would be whether we want to go fine free or not and how much we want to ask the town for as the capital budget, the, the, what we're gonna put away into capital. So, I'm, I, I think the two might be intertwined, but I would just start by saying that the one consideration that, that, you know, that we all have to consider as a tax cap. So, there, that is, that is something that we've been mindful the whole time. And either version of the budget that we posted this evening for everyone's review, both of those keep us under the tax cap. And we would be able to stay under the tax cap with, with an increase in the capital budget up to, but, but I would say not really exceeding a hundred a hundred thou, not that I'm set, not that I'm saying we should go there necessarily, but I just wanted to make that clear before we start talking, that we sort of know what the parameters are. And then, I will, I'll open it up and, and let you guys, let's, let's, let's talk it through what we think in terms of where we want to go. I think I'll start by saying that I, I'm concerned that there's a lot of things that we weren't able to budget as line items that we're counting on capital for and that that we have maybe half a million that we already planned to spend out of the capital. And I think some of the numbers within that are very optimistic. And the things that are, that, you know, that, that, that give me, where I think, why we should be taking funds for capital are the stream. We don't, you know, that's an unknown number at this point and it could be a lot higher than it currently, you know, than we've currently estimated it for. And although any one of these things in isolation won't, you know, we're very fiscally responsible and we do have a healthy capital fund. How, so none of these in isolation is such a threat, but if the stream costs too much, if fuel costs go through the, you know, if, if different, if, if too many variables come together at once, we could get into a situation where we really needed more capital than what we anticipated. So, that's, so I'm, I'm inclined to go up from the ninety, but I'm, I'm, I'll open it up to what others are thinking. And if you want to comment on the fine free, not fine free as part of this or do that, I'm not sure, you know, they're, they're intertwined, obviously, because the budget numbers are different depending on which version, but let me just yield to who, 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 does someone want to talk? Lane?
Sure. So, first off, we implemented the $90,000 capital line item two years ago, because I was involved in the first year that we did this. And that's, that's a new line item that never existed before. We've, we've also annually put away somewhere between $200 and $400,000 a year in savings out of our operating budget for the last several years. And I would anticipate there'll be some amount of, there's some amount of cushion per se in your budget because you're budgeting for a hundred percent. And generally, you don't always run at a hundred percent. Hence, I think you already have cushion and capital in there. Yep, so that you're gonna have 90,000 here year after year. And the capital projects you're talking about are not all gonna happen this year. In the scheme of things, is 5,000 or 10,000 gonna move your needle? No. And I do think you have one fairly large as a percent of whole capital account now, you have, are likely going to have and have, because you have historically had somewhere between eight and 10% excess in your operating budget, you've moved into your capital account year after year, plus that 90,000 dollars. So, I don't see a reason to in, increase that by any amount. I'm fine. Um, I'm fine with going fine-free. Um, I, you know, if that's where people, I mean, that seems to be the movement of the library community. And that embraces the community so that nobody is bearing some extra burden, particularly in these days and times. So, that's my stand.
Okay. Nishat?
Um, I'm, I have to agree with Lane. We started the ninety, asking the ninety thousand as a line item in the twenty twenty, twenty-one budget. We did it last year and this will be the third year that we're asking for is. The taxpayers have been very generous and have given it to, given us that money. Um, our current balance in our capital reserve is over a million dollars. And as Lane said, not all our stuff is going to happen this year. So, asking for ninety thousand this year and, you know, continuing that, you know, we have a healthy um, capital reserve budget that I don't feel like we need to max out our tax gap just because it's available to us. And regarding the fine-free, um, I, I am foregoing fine-free. Eighteen out of the thirty-two WLS libraries are fine-free. Our surrounding libraries of Austin, Mount Pleasant, North Casper, North Castle and Bedford, Free Library all fine-free. So, I think that's just taking us in the right direction. And it's the direction that I feel the strategic plan that we just worked on. Um, where we talk about being a welcoming uh, library, going fine-free meets that objective.
Ronnie?
So, I believe that we should um, increase the uh, capital reserve to a hundred thousand. And I'm going to tell you why. Every time so many things are quote contingent on or being appropriated to capital. We have the, the, Liz, you made an excellent point about the outside and the stream. That's a lot of work and yes, it will be over time. But we have to be fiduciaries and think about the future and other, and things that will come up. And you made another good point about energy costs. I'm afraid to look at my next Con Ed bill. Um, the, and, and as I said, the appropriations to a cons, you know, a lot of things are being appropriated to the capital fund. And yes, we also have things that we don't know that will come up, that may cost a lot of money. And that's the purpose of having this. The other issue is that if we had a huge expense, if something happened that um, we needed to raise a lot of, we, we could just can't raise money and go for bond. That has to be done through the school district. And I think that a lot of things outside are, are a lot of work. We don't know that now. And really, ten thousand dollars is not that much. And it's certainly not even going to come close to the, being approaching the tax cap. So, I think that um, I, I'd like to see it at a hundred thousand. And as far as fines go, I, I've asked people in the community and a lot of people say, yes, fines are fine. And um, so I'm fine with keeping fines. And I don't think that changes from us not being a welcoming place. And I think that um, you know, it's also an accountability issue. So, that's my position on the um, capital reserve.
Yeah, I, I want to underscore what you're saying about the, you know, we, we were lucky in that the school district wanted to do a bond and we received money as part of that bond. Um, and that, that ability to raise money through a bond is not ours. It's only the school districts. So unless, like, we're not an agency to do that. So unless they wanted to, which I don't think there's any appetite in the foreseeable future for bonds, we won't have any ability to um, to, to, so we will always, for the foreseeable future, be incrementally trying to add to our capital fund so as not to deplete it with what we've planned. And I think I have a line of sight to like, half a million dollars. So the, even though a million seems like a big fund um, balance, half of it is already earmarked. And, and to me, optimistically, that we stay within that. Um, and the way we've been adding to the fund balance, I'm not sure that that will continue. Because I think if fuel costs go up, if inflation hits the way it's looking like it might um, with war in Europe, uh, with so many factors that we don't know, as well as the factors that we do know, I would rather iteratively take the extra, maybe not, maybe we compromise and we only take five thousand instead of ten thousand. So we go from ninety to ninety-five, not a hundred. Um, because I don't think we need to go, um, you know, Nishat, we're not trying to take, we're not trying to take more than we need. But I do agree with Ronnie that the fiduciary responsibility to take enough so that you are able to cover, you know, should something happen that requires a large amount of money that we're not um, that we're not, you know, begging for a bond, that we actually have the funds and can manage our finances to cover whatever it would be that we would need. Um, and I, I, there are projects that we have not marked yet, such as the security for our outdoor. When we, when we redo that outdoor, we will have incremental security costs. And we already have not upgraded security in terms of our um, our, you know, our, our video quality. Uh, uh, you know, it's, there are things on the horizon that um, you know, we, we obviously just came through a big construction project. And we came through COVID. So, uh, in fairness to the library, I don't want to say that we haven't planned. It's, it's a matter of timing that there are bigger costs that we are on the brink of, on, of, of defining, let's say. And so that is, that is my motivation, Ronnie.
Yeah, I want to just add a couple of things that not only the outside, we need new carpeting. We need new furnishings inside the library to match the modern look that we have in the children's room. We've been needing new furniture for years in, and it's a whole, you know, with COVID also. And, and the way people are interacting, that's another thing. Also, you know, yes, we could apply for grants, but in order to apply for a grant, if there is the money, because it doesn't, it didn't look that great. And if, when I, what I heard was correct last week from Terry Kirshner about how much the state grant money was it for the whole state, it's, it's not a lot. We have to be able to have the amount that the grant is in order to apply for it. So, that's, those are other considerations. So it's not just the outside. We have things to do in the inside. And I just um, and thank you for, you know, reiterating some of the things.
I'd like to put a proposal on the table, compromise. Why don't we not go fine-free and increase it to ninety-five thousand?
Yeah. I agree with that. I think that's a good compromise. If we delay uh, removing the fine for a year, that basically will fund this five thousand.
And then potentially with auto renewal, we would be able to help our patrons out with that. So it would kind of, that would be an incremental compromise in the compromise, right?
Yeah.
I, I, I just want to add that, you know, I understand what everybody's saying. But everything that we're talking about in terms of, you know, pricing going up with um, you know, with Con Ed, with electricity and um, stuff, that's the same stuff that our taxpayers are going through too. So, by saying that, you know, we're not asking for much, they might be thinking the same thing. Like, we're going through the same thing the library is going through. We're already being generous enough and supporting the library and they've always been very supportive. You know, you don't want to come to the thing that it seems like just five thousand. But, you know, it, it, they're all in this together and they have the same concerns with their household budgets that we do with the library budget.
Right. No, it's, it's true. And I think that's, I think it's wise of us not to take a hundred. And ninety-five feels like a good compromise. And I also do think that, you know, we don't know who's going to contest their taxes and where we actually net out. Um, because that's a concurrent process. So, um, you know, we get a person, we, it's, so anyways, it, I, I'm, I'm comfortable. At the outset of this, I said I wanted to get to a place where Andrew could bring us one budget for our next meeting that we could say, hey, community, this is what we want you to review. Um, and I'm, I would be comfortable if he brought us uh, the, the budget that has the, with the, continuing the fine, because we can always take the fine out in a subsequent year. Or even if we decide that fuel costs aren't, you know, if, if things look different halfway through and we're, our projections are good on the budget, we could always, at, you know, we're not, once we take away the fines, I think it's harder to add them back anyways. So, um, I think, I think we're at a place that seems like um, could, could we all, could we all get behind ninety-five as our, as our capital? And then the, the version of the budget with the fine and uh, and, and.
I'm fine with that. So maybe just ask everybody how they feel about it. Plus, there was a little comment in the chat from actually a staff member. Do you want to hear what it was?
Yes, please.
So, um, this staff member said, I'm in favor of maintaining fives, fines for many reasons. But I believe our DVD fines are currently too high. So maybe that's something that could get looked at. Because I, anyway, so that's a, that was a staff member saying that. So, that's an issue that you can take up. At some.
Okay, that's.
Favor of the ninety-five with fines.
Okay, I think uh, Lane, that was, you're, you're good with that? And uh, Shoray?
Yes.
Nishat?
I was really hoping for the fine-free because I feel like that's the route everybody else is going, the library system. And all our surrounding libraries are doing that. But if that's what the rest of the board wants, then I'll agree.
I think Andrew will be able to, we don't currently auto-renew. And so I think we'll be able to auto-renew, which will help with the fine situation. Um, and then it'll just be a matter of increasing circ if we need.
You're now counting on those dollars, so you need to not.
I, well, that's why I said you have to increase circulation if you want to get, you know, if, uh, it's an odd thing to say, but if, if we make it easier to auto-renew, then we need more circ to get, to have the, to get um, fines. And maybe we can't lower the DVD fine because it is part of the budget. However, um, yeah, so it's, so it sounds like, Andrew, we're going to maintain the fine and go to ninety-five on the capital for this go-around. And then potentially midway through the fiscal year or, or sooner, depending on, you know, right now, we're in very uncertain times and um, and there's a lot of variables. But perhaps at some point in the fiscal year, we can revisit the fine issue if we're seeing that we're in a good place budgetarily. Ronnie?
Yeah, I just want to uh, say one thing that I really wanted to say at the beginning of this before we even had the conversations about the reserve. I want to really thank the finance committee, Shoray and Nishat and Andrew for the work that they did on the, on the budget. I know that um, they got a lot of input from us and they worked very hard. And I feel like this is a, a good budget for next year. So I really wanted to thank them for that work.
I think we've all felt like it's been, uh, you guys have really put in a lot of time and effort. And I've appreciated the um, that, all the thinking that has gone into this. So it's, it's a, I'm, I'm, I'm optimistic that the community is going to receive it well and that, that we will um, get their support on it. Does anyone have any other comments, Andrew?
I'll work on uh, putting that together. Uh, if you'd like me to look at how fines will be affected by um, modifying the DVD fine rate. I can also put those numbers together, uh, working with Marge. You know, our DVD circulation has gone down a lot. We are one of the highest uh, fees for DVDs in the county at two dollars a day. You know, if we dropped it down to one, I could, I could look to see how much, you know, how that would affect it as well. Um, and I'll email the board so that we can, we can see that before putting together the final product.
That's great. I really appreciate your diligence and your willingness to look at everything and uh, and see where we can, where we can help out the patrons. Um, so that's good. So we're, I feel like we're in a good place with that. Thank you, everybody. That's great. Um, so the last thing, I just wanted to make sure we um, spoke publicly, Andrew, to talk about the mask mandate. Can you just cover off on that quickly for us?
Absolutely. Uh, as of tomorrow, the uh, mask mandate for schools and daycares is ending. Uh, which means uh, masks uh, in the schools and daycare centers will be optional. Uh, it is still in place for um, healthcare facilities, nursing homes, hospitals. I've been speaking to the staff, getting feedback and working very closely with the children's room right now. Um, the children's room is a unique, unique situation in that um, those who are aged zero to five are still unable to get vaccinated. And uh, study was just released from Pfizer uh, just two or three days ago, um, which really brought the efficacy of the current um, booster, current vaccines for the five to elevens into light, showing that it's at a very, very low rate. Um, I understand there is a very large um, demand from the community to have masks optional. So we're looking at the best ways we can try to be flexible, protect the staff, um, protect those with families uh, that may have medical issues, protect uh, the little kids, while also allowing those who are vaccinated and comfortable uh, and, and do not want to wear masks uh, to be heard as well. So I am in the process of working with all of the different departments. I will have um, uh, recommendations to the board, but no later than the end of this week uh, so that we can uh, update our policies uh, in one direction or another. Uh, hopefully, beginning of next week, early next week. I was expecting this.
Are you anticipating we'll wear masks tomorrow? That it's required tomorrow? Given that we're, given that we're school property and the schools have dropped it?
Until we, we update our policy, yes, our policy would stay in effect until we all.
Is our policy, I thought our, is our policy that, that we have to wear a mask? Or is it, you have to do what's the policy of the state, which would, under educational law would then say we're, we're not required to have masks?
Currently, it's up to the library, um, and we have chosen to maintain masks.
So as part of our safety plan, we would need to vote to modify that. So we have, our, our next meeting is on the fifteenth. So, at no later than the fifteenth, we need to know how we're proceeding. And I, I don't, I, I would, I find it hard to imagine that we are going to continue to require masks. Um, so as quickly as we can determine what our path forward is, uh, we should do that.
But I, why don't I make a motion now then to, why don't we vote on whether we're having masks tomorrow or not, given the state mandate goes away?
Does someone want to second that motion?
I would like to work out a policy for the children's room, maybe where we.
Children, childrens who are never required to wear one and the, they're not, I mean, it's voluntary. Anybody is welcome to wear one. It's a function of whether you're requiring it or not. There's no ban on them. It's just that you're not, it's not a requirement. Um, and children under five have greater risk of dying in a car ride to the library than they do of COVID statistically. I just, I, I don't know why we would deviate from the CDC, the State Health Department, the Department of Ed, I just, I just trying to figure out, and I don't mean to be mean, I'm just simply saying, I don't understand why we're deviating from all the other organizations that have larger groups that have done the research on it.
So I, I, I think we need to, this is new news as of, I believe, yesterday or the day before. Yeah, the news was over the weekend. So I think this is very new news and I, I, I want to, I want to give the library time. You know, I, I don't, I don't believe that there, you know, the, the, as Andrew said, there are still places that are, that are required to adhere to the mask mandate. Yes, schools are not one of those places and we are a school district library. And I think we will, we will have to mod, I think, you know, we will likely modify what we're doing. I, I want to give Andrew the time to, to get everyone comfortable.
I, I appreciate Andrew's doing, working with his team and I appreciate the team's input and, and I don't want that to be misconstrued. I just, in the, the state, the CDC has all said it's not required. I'm just not sure why we're somehow thinking that we're different than, you know, kindergarten class.
Yeah, I think we have, I think we have a hand raised.
Oh, yes, so, Robin, would you, I will bring her in to be able to speak if there's no objections.
That's, that's fine with me.
Robin, I just tried to bring you in as a panelist. There you go.
Just unmute herself. There you go.
Hi, I just wanted to speak a little bit to one of the ways in which we are different from schools and part of what is going into our calculations for keeping the space safe for a variety of kids. And one of the ways, one of the really meaningful ways in which we are different is that school populations are a set population. So it's always the same people and they have mechanisms for doing contact tracing and for being aware, frankly, of who has been in the space, who has been sick. And that's not one of the things that we have available to us at the public library. So anyone can come in and no one has any responsibility to inform us. So schools have, you know, they have a classroom full of kids and when the kids aren't there or a daycare or whatever, they tend to know why. And we're not going to have that kind of mechanism. So that means that we're operating without a lot of information that schools actually can count on having in order to keep their population safe. So that's one of the main differences. We also know that we have a number of immunocompromised families that have only felt safe coming into the library because of continued mask wearing by the community. So that's something that we'd like to have a little bit of time to figure out if there are ways that we can create safe spaces for them or provide other ways in which they can continue to feel welcome in the library, feel safe and welcome there. So those are, those are a couple of things that we've been thinking about. In addition, we are also worried about the staff. You know, kids and families can come in all day long. They have essentially the same rate of even vaccinated kids at this point, the five to 11 population have essentially the same rate of catching and transmitting COVID, even though they are more protected from severe disease. And so as, as members of the community, people get to come in and spend however much time they feel comfortable there. But as staff members, we are there for eight hours a day. And so our accumulated exposure is considerably larger than other people's will be.
But you're still welcome to wear masks. And, and, but that holds for anybody who goes to work anywhere. You know, you're not any different than hostess at a restaurant or, I mean, it's.
For the most part, some of their population can be vaccinated and none of our population can be yet. Or of our younger kids at least.
And how is that different if they're in the rest of the library? I mean, you know, you, they're still moving through, the whole staff is not just the children's room. They're going to be at the checkout desk and all the other places we've been building.
So there are, there are technically two, two separate systems in HVAC for the children's section and the adult section. Not that there isn't airflow between the two, but technically they are operating on separate systems. Ronnie?
Yes, so first of all, Robin, I 100% support the, your concerns and I'm, you know, think that's a good plan to try to figure some things out and you made some really good points. Also, you can't ride public transportation without a mask. You can't go into a hospital and other places without a mask. And Broadway is making people wear masks. So there are places where masks have to be worn. And I think that Liz's point in letting the staff and Andrew to say, to try to work this out is a good plan. And I don't think that, so I just think, let's do that. And then the, the, what's supposed to happen, according to our pandemic policy and safety plan, is that we would review that and then that committee would talk about what's the next step. So I think we should follow our policy. And it sounds like Andrew's doing that with the staff and that's, that's a good thing. So that's what I have to say on this issue. And I think that this is the kind of thing that's, everybody's going to have their own opinion on and people will do what they feel comfortable doing and not comfortable. But I, I think that Robin made some excellent points, so I want to.
And I, I absolutely appreciate her opinion and her, and her position. And, and again, I, I don't, I'm not trying to be difficult so much as I'm just pointing out that, that the world is going to unmasked. We might, we might as well keep, the country is going to unmask. We need to continue to start living again.
Well, and I value what you have to say, Lane, but I just don't agree with you 100%. So, and I support Robin and following the policy. That's what I think we need to do is we.
We're following the policy. I think, I think we have, to me, we have a hard deadline for evolving because our, our next meeting on the 15th is sort of my deadline for Andrew and everybody to get comfortable with the new normal, whatever that's going to look like. And I think likely it, it will probably mirror what the rest of our community is doing. But I think we need to get comfortable with that and figure out if there are carve outs or how we do that and make sure that, to whatever extent possible, we can honor everyone's feelings and help everybody make this leap. Because for some people, it's a bigger, you know, it is, it is more challenging and fraught with more issues than others. And I, I want to be, you know, I think it may be that tomorrow we have to have an emergency session to approve something because of the, you know, the actual behaviors of people coming into the library and, and the impact on the community of confrontation. Like I have no idea what tomorrow will look like, because I know Andrew spoke to this, that our community, not, you know, our, our, our patrons are really, really excited to take their masks off for the most part. I'm not saying 100%, but for the most part, I believe that if you, if you, if we did a, if we had every patron tell us their vote, the majority would say that they want their masks off. And that's a reality and the CDC and all, you know, everybody who's allowing no masks is responding to that as well as to the fact that the masks really do work well. So that for people who are wearing them, they are protected, so long as they're wearing them appropriately. So we just have to figure this out as quickly as we can. And I just, I, 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 I understand where you're coming from, Robin, and I think we're trying to figure it out with you and, and get to as comfortable as possible, as quick as possible with whatever the new normal is going to be. But thank you for, for jumping in and being here this evening. We appreciate all your hard work and the children's room is, you know, we're really happy with what we're seeing going on there. So thank you.
Before you drop out, Robin, I know Nishat's had her hand up for a while, so just in case she has any questions for you.
No questions for Robin, but I totally understand your concern, Robin. I, I understand, Andrew, what you're trying to do to get the staff's input. My concern is, as being a school library, if we say you have to have your mask on tomorrow, are we in violation of law, of state law?
No.
No.
We are allowed to make our own. The state even said, you know, local, local governments, local counties, local governments, agencies are able to make their own rules, so we're not in violation of anything. I do know from polling the other libraries that most of the other libraries are going this route or have already gone this route. And we're looking at different options for what we could do. You know, maybe we can do specific times in the morning that are, are, you know, masks are required in the children's rooms, that those who are immunocompromised or are not comfortable, maybe they could come in at a specific time. We're, we're discussing a lot of different options for how we can try to meet the needs of both groups. You know, children's department has, has really asked some good questions. Thankfully, now testing is much more available. You know, just a few months ago, it was impossible and prohibitively expensive for us to get testing. We now have, have the ability to get tests for staff. There's a lot of moving parts. Honestly, we were expecting to hear, to, to get this type of change on March 16th, when the, the state of emergency was due to either be expired or extended. So we're just, we're just trying to make sure that we are both safe and welcoming to all of our patrons, those who feel they need to still wear a mask and those who feel that they don't. But I don't want to just sit here and keep kicking the can. You know, we're trying to, we're trying to make the best decision we can in a timely manner that, that supports everybody, basically. I know that it's a very, very difficult thing. This has been a very rough few years for everybody. And I know there, there are lots of people who don't feel comfortable taking off the mask as well as those who cannot wait to take it off. So it's, it's a lot and, you know, that's why we want, well, you know, the input of the, the board, the input of the staff and to work together to really be successful. I will say one thing, I, I really do want to thank the entire Chapua community. My family works in multiple libraries. I'm in touch with the, the directors of the other libraries as well as staff of the libraries. And I can tell you, we have had some of the least difficulty with getting patrons to wear their masks. They have been incredibly understanding here at Chapua. We are very, very grateful for that. We really do, you know, I, my wife works in multiple libraries and every day she's getting battles where people are fighting. We have not seen that here and, and we are incredibly, incredibly grateful for the support. But we also understand that they are going to demand this at some, so.
So what?
Very difficult.
So, okay, so tomorrow, if somebody comes in and they don't want a mask and they tell you, well, it's not required, what is our plan?
We just say, you know, our policy is still to require masks. We are currently working on our guidelines and we will be, we will have a board meeting on March 15th where we vote on our, our changes.
Right, and we still have masks on hand to provide to people, should they forget, which is a common thing. I mean, we're hand, I think, Andrew, we hand out masks, it's not a big deal. People forget in the car and they come in and they get one. So I, I don't anticipate that we're going to have, I think people might be shocked that it is, that it hasn't changed and that'll be a different kind of experience to manage. But I'm hopeful that you're going to get back to us quickly if we, you know, if we want, if we, if it, if we feel like it, we can have a, we can call an executive session, not an executive, a emergency session at a earlier point before the 15th. But certainly we will get back to the community on the 15th. And, and I'm sure that will include changes. And with that, I, I want to, I want to, I believe our president is speaking momentarily, if he hasn't already started. So I think we should probably all adjourn. Does someone want to make a motion?
Before we. Shoray, Shoray did not have a chance to, um, to speak about the masks and I didn't know, Shoray, if you had any, any comments or opinions for me? Just so that as I'm working through this, you know, I kind of know where everyone, what everyone's thoughts are.
Yeah, I, I like the idea that you're working with staff to figure out some solutions. I think we should allow that time for, for a solution to emerge.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ronnie?
I'll move that we adjourn the budget work session at 8:35 PM.
Do I have a second? Shoray?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.
Thank you, everybody.